Hi, I'm Christina Holtz and I'm a volunteer and steering committee member with the League of Women Voters of Hamilton-Wenham. The League is a nonpartisan political organization which encourages informed and active participation in government. For more than 60 years, the League of Women Voters of Hamilton-Wenham has been hosting a candidate's night as part of our voter education program. Our goal is to provide a forum for candidates to introduce themselves and a few of their ideas to the community so that voters will be more informed at upcoming elections. We solicit questions from our membership and also from town residents. Tonight, we welcome the four candidates for the Select Board race in Hamilton. There are two seats open and each is for a term of three years. The candidates running for Select Board in Hamilton are Caroline Bollou, Darcy Dale, Rosie Kennedy, and Tom Myers. Also joining us tonight is my fellow League Steering Committee member Tess Leary. Tess will be our timekeeper this evening. And now I'd like to introduce our moderator, Wenham resident Paul Mihailidis. Paul is a professor of civic media and journalism and Assistant Dean in the School of Communication at Emerson College in Boston, where he teaches media literacy, civic media, and community participation. He is founding program director of the Masters in Media Design, Senior Fellow of the Emerson Engagement Lab, and Faculty Chair and Director of the Salzburg Academy on Media and Global Change. This is the fourth year that Paul has generously agreed and volunteered his services as our moderator, and we're very grateful for his help. Thank you, Paul.
Thanks Christina, and it's great to be with you and thanks for that really kind introduction. I'd like to go back and see how it's evolved over four years. There it is, but I really appreciate everyone being here tonight and the opportunity to get to facilitate the discussion we're going to have. So I would first love to thank the Hamilton-Wenham League of Women Voters for this voter education program that they run. I think especially over the last years, you know, there's a lot that you can read and a lot that we post and share about ourselves, but this is as close as we'll be now to hearing directly from candidates, and I think that's really important for the town. And before we start, I'd also like to thank the four of you, obviously as a resident in Wenham with young children in the town. You know, this type of volunteerism is greatly appreciated. Volunteering for all different facets of our communities make them stronger and really appreciate the time and effort everyone has already put into this. And thank you moving forward for your future commitments to the Board or elsewhere should that happen. So I will give a little bit of an overview for how this will work and then we're going to dive right in. So we have four questions tonight for the candidates. We have opening statements and closing statements, which we'll bookend those. We have selected randomly who will go first and then we will rotate through alphabetically by last name after that. So you will each have the chance to speak first to the question. Tess, who you can't see just that blue screen in one of your gallery boxes. If you stay in gallery view, you'll see a timer that will appear as you start to answer those questions. You'll have two minutes for your opening statements and then two minutes for each question, and you'll see the color changing as you get nearer to the end. So I appreciate your attempts to stay. I know it's hard to answer some large questions in two minutes, but we really do appreciate your attempts to be efficient and stick to the time. So, okay, so let's dive in. So Rosie, you get to go first on the opening statements. And the opening statements allows you two minutes to talk a little bit about yourself and to let the community know why you've decided to run for the Hamilton Select Board. So Rosie, over to you.
Okay. Hi, good evening, everybody, and thank you so much, Paul and Christina and League of Women Voters. So for those who don't know me, I'm Rosie Kennedy, and I'm running for a second term as your Select Board Member. I'm a mom to one son, Mike, and I have family members living in town with two nephews who attend our school system. My work life has always been about service. I'm in RN at a major Boston hospital, and I've spent the past two years witnessing the multitude of traumas inflicted by COVID on patients and on my colleagues. I'm also an attorney and I consult with the Public Defender's Office. I work to defend the rights of disadvantaged persons who've become entangled in the criminal justice system. It was a natural progression then to want to serve as a member of the Select Board. My perspective is always we. I firmly believe working alongside residents on the front lines of our community has been the best way to learn about what's important to them. In fact, sitting at Select Board meetings is the mere tip of the iceberg in my community engagement. The overarching principle of my policy work over the past three years is that we are one community that must work together to attain our common goals. And those goals include providing a high-performing school district for our children, maintaining a strong, efficient town administration that provides top-notch services to our residents, preserve the quality of life for our residents, protect our fragile natural resources from depletion and pollution, and five, provide a path for more commercial development to diversify our tax base and lessen the tax burden. Thank you.
Thanks, Rosie. Much appreciated. Tom, we'll go next to you for opening statement.
All right, great. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tom Myers. Thank you, Christina, and thank you to Paul, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this. Really happy to be here. So a little bit about me, I'm 36 years old. I was born and raised on the North Shore and lived in Hamilton for the past 11 years, with a wife and three kids, a five-year-old son, a three-year-old daughter, and a almost five-month-old daughter. So I do have some prior involvement in the town. I was on the Conservation Commission for a term back in 2016 to 2019. So felt me exposed to the flavor of local politics, you know, kind of got a chance to get in there and see how the sausage was made, which was really exciting. Professionally, I'm an attorney. I've been practicing for about 10 years. I spent the first half of my career advocating for seniors and individuals with disabilities, you know, helping them obtain social security benefits, helping them with their Medicare, their Medicaid, providing resources around employment and housing. After that, I entered public service, so I worked for the Commonwealth, and I spent almost five years at the Department of Early Education and Care overseeing all childcare in the Commonwealth. So I was in various legal roles, most recently as their General Counsel. In that role, I drafted legislations, regulation, I created policy, I negotiated collective bargaining agreements, and oversaw the implementation of a statewide plan that kind of outlined all of the department's priorities and goals. I also served as their federal grant administrator, so I oversaw compliance with their federal block grant, which is $600 million. So I made sure we're meeting our financial obligations, reviewed budgets, created budget language for the governor's budget, and also involved in a lot of engagement around, you know, different policies that we're creating at the ECU, some of the, you know, COVID policies, interacting with individuals and different stakeholders. So just happy to be involved in getting back into town, and I think my experience would be really valuable for the board, and I can, you know, bring the community together and help find some common ground. So, you know, happy to be here. Thanks.
Thanks, Tom. Much appreciated. Caroline, your next opening statement.
Absolutely. Thank you. Hello, yes, I'm Caroline Bollou, and I echo the sentiments of everyone. Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters and both of y'all for doing this. I know the community is hungry for this platform, so I'm so grateful to y'all for doing this. I have lived in Hamilton for four, almost four years. My husband Corey, many people know he's on the planning board currently. God bless him. I have one child, he's eight years old, he's at Bueker, author. And why am I running? So from the very beginning of this, I really run on a platform that's really about the process. How can we do better at building community with a different process than how we're currently going about it? And I sort of see that in four different ways. The first is really increasing visibility and engagement. So how do we get more folks to actively participate in this process? We have literally hundreds, if not thousands, of people involved in online conversations within our community, and yet we have 10 or 12 people showing up to the Select Board meetings, or we have less than 20% of people voting. And so how do we engage differently there? Many folks saw this week that Tom and I had annotated the town warrant to make sure that it was simpler to understand, and we distributed that. So, you know, things like that, that increase visibility and engagement and help people be part of the process. The second is really encourage participation in open dialogue. We've been in conversations with Mark Healy's office around how we can both use open meeting law to create separate conversations that allow people more opportunities to bring their voice to the table and talk about the things that they're worried about, so that we can sort of make sure that more people have a say in the way that we make decisions. I think, you know, with increased visibility comes increased engagement, with increased engagement comes increased participation. The third thing is really about listening. I want to listen. I don't want to be pro or anti anything. I want to know how we can make these decisions in a thoughtful way and build strategies to build our community. So really looking forward to listening to other people and hearing other people's ideas and making some smart decisions that can help move the town forward.
Thanks, Caroline. And Darcy, your turn for opening statement.
Thank you, and I do want to thank the League of Women Voters and everybody on the screen here. This is how we get things done, so I'm very appreciative. The first thing I want you to know about me is that I love Hamilton. I love everything about it, and I want to preserve the rural feel of our town. And I believe in working together to create value for the taxpayers and the people who live here. So it's been my great honor and such a privilege to serve the people of Hamilton. And I have been working for them for the last six years. I spent two appointments with the Finance and Advisory Committee, which gave me a really, what would you call it, a 10,000-foot view of the town and how it works and what's important and how we move forward. And I've had the first Select Board term is coming to an end. It's a three-year term. So I am running for reelection. And when I took that oath of office, I made a pledge to put the people, all the people, first and foremost. I pledged to serve everyone, and I don't care whether you lean right or left or no way at all, if you're in the center. I pledged to serve everyone, and I will do my very, very best to work as hard as I can for each and every one of you. I promise to continue working on these pressing issues that are facing the town, and that would include water, our environment, regional collaboration, entrepreneurial initiatives, and responsible, sustainable development, citizen services, and fiscal discipline. And there's so much that we have left to do, and there's a lot of important work ahead of us. I am humbly asking for your vote, and I will do the very, very best that I can, and I will continue working hard. Thank you.
Opening statements, much appreciated. We are going to dive right into our questions. So we've got four questions in this part of this kind of open dialogue. Again, we'll be rotating who gets to lead and we'll follow alphabetically from there. So you'll have two minutes to answer each question, and we appreciate you staying to that time. So the first question, we're going to start with Tom. And Tom, this question, or all the questions are about different elements, some issues that are happening and others approaches, and they all have a different facet that we've curated for you to answer. So first question, Tom, is to you, and the question reads, "Please provide an example of a time when you were able to work with others who held differing opinions."
Yeah, no, it's a really good question and a really important, you know, element to kind of part of leadership to have. So there's been a couple of times, I'll probably use the example of, you know, being at early education, you know, working for the state, where we had to create a lot of policy, and I was at that time serving as the General Counsel for the agency during the time of COVID, where we had to come up with a lot of different policies around protecting our youth and our children and childcare programs. So we had to come up with a whole host of, you know, different health and safety requirements and, you know, mask mandates and all of these different requirements for programs. So we had to work with a lot of individuals, we had to work with our public health department, we had to work with advocates, we had to work with a whole bunch of different agencies and the public as well, and childcare programs. We had to gather a whole bunch of feedback, you know, analyze that data. We had a whole host of different opinions, people that didn't agree with certain regulations or certain requirements, people that didn't agree with mask mandates, and we had to balance that. So you had to look at the information, look at why people are agreeing with a particular side or why they're disagreeing with a particular requirement, and analyze that data, you know, talk to people about, you know, where we can kind of find some common ground. And ultimately, you know, we did that early education, go in the favor of being very restrictive at first, and as the science evolved and as things, you know, kept the light and we learned more, we were able to loosen restrictions, we were able to talk to parents and talk to childcare providers about what is going to be helpful for those. So we did have a lot of people with a lot of different views. I think the best place to connect with as many people as possible, get as much information, get as much resources, and talk to people and find out what their concerns are, and then how do you alleviate that? How do you find a balance? How do you find common ground? And we were able to be successful in that. We were able to, you know, change our mind as things evolved and as we got more information. And I think that's important. I think you can always admit when you need to modify things while you're into something. So I think that's important, and I think that's something that I can bring to the Select Board and help, you know, bring to common ground.
Thanks, Tom. Caroline, the question is next to you. It's, "Please provide an example of a time when you were able to work with others who held differing opinions."
Well, I think anyone who stayed married or parented a child during COVID knows what it's like to be with people with differing opinions. But, you know, I think that my professional work, I work in financial services, and I work sort of at the nexus of multiple groups who are constantly sort of working together towards a common goal, but coming from different perspectives. And I think the first thing is always around open communication and making sure that, you know, there's incredible transparency in the process, everybody comes to the table ready to talk. But I also think it's important that you start with the understanding that it's not about who's right, because we all believe we're right, right? We all come to the table with a lived experience or a desire for what we want. But, you know, making progress is never really about being right. It's about understanding what everybody brings to the table and moving that conversation forward in a way that helps everybody sort of get to a better place. And so, you know, I think certainly as it applies to Hamilton, we've had a really unprecedented levels of engagement over the last couple of years. There were certainly a lot of big decisions that had to be made both within the Select Board but also in the School Committee that brought together a lot of differing opinions, and there was never going to be a right answer. And that's where I think my platform about, like, what is the process? And how do we make sure that people feel carried and held and supported in that decision-making process and heard in that decision-making process helps all of us feel better about the outcomes? Because in the end, we're not going to please everybody, but we all live in this town and we all love this town. We all have to take a left off of Cherry Street onto 1A and wait there. Like, we all have these same experiences, and those are the experiences that we really want to bring together in order to make the best decisions that work for us moving forward.
Thanks, Caroline. Much appreciated. I keep thinking about those few people that get to take the right off of Cherry Street.
To one day be that person, just the one time.
Thank you for your statement. Darcy, we're gonna head over to you, and the question is, "An example of a time when you were able to work with others who held differing opinions."
I think that happens almost weekly, well, not weekly, bi-weekly at our Board of Select Board meetings, because we all come from different places and we all have different ideas, and we're all talking to different, I don't want to say constituent citizens, and they also have different ideas. So I really like the idea of taking our time, communicating with each other, finding out where everybody stands, and again, this term "common ground", it really means something. It means you find a place where it's solid and you can build a foundation, and from the foundation, you can build a framework, and from that framework, you can actually create some value, value for the citizens. And so I really, I really like this form of self-government. I think it's a way for people from all walks, all backgrounds, to come together, learn what we have in common, and learn how to talk to one another. Opinions, everyone's going to have different opinions, and nobody should be shamed or put down because they have a different opinion than your neighbor or your coworker or whatever. So I really think communication is key to finding those areas of common ground, and it's essential that we as a town keep going in that direction. We can't go retreat into our silos and, you know, think that we have all the answers, because we don't. And I think if we can reach out, find the common ground, build a foundation, create a framework, we can actually make progress for the town. Thank you.
Thanks, Darcy. Rosie, you get the last answer here on the first question.
Okay, great. Thank you. So example of working with others who had differing opinions. I could apply that to many things, but I think one of the most poignant things was working as an advocate attorney for a particular client through the Public Defender's Office. And I can remember feeling very confident that this person would be found not guilty. We had evidence that would prove it, and yet this person was so habituated to the criminal justice system that he was convinced that no matter what anybody said, he was going to go to jail. And so he agreed to take what I believed was a, he initially agreed to take what I believed was a horrendous plea bargain. And I thought, oh my God, how can I talk to this person? And I guess one of my strengths is the ability to listen to people and to be non-judgmental. And it really helped me to put myself in that person's place. I was quite frankly astounded, and as I relive it, I really understand how difficult that was for him. And so one of the important lessons I learned that day was to really allow others their voice and accept who they are, certainly try to encourage people to stand up for themselves, offer your support for them, which we certainly did in this case. And ultimately, this person did decide not to accept the plea bargain, and as I was sure about, we were able to garner a not guilty plea. But that was quite an experience for me, and it's something that's stayed with me all these years, and I'm so happy to be involved in that line of work where I can make a difference in people's lives. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Rosie, and thanks to everyone for that, for sharing those personal insights about how much we always have to cross differences when we're engaged in our work lives and our personal lives as well. So our next question is more about one issue that's happening in our towns, and Caroline, we're going to start with you on this one. And then we'll go to Darcy and Rosie, and we'll finish with Tom. And the second question reads, "What are your thoughts on using CPA funds for preserving land and/or caring for our natural environment?" Caroline, you get to go first.
Absolutely. Thank you. This is definitely the question I was hoping to go first on. No, that's not true. So, you know, the CPA legislation that was put in effect in Massachusetts, I think, was in 2000, and it was pretty specific, right? It's around acquiring, creating, and preserving open space, acquiring, creating, and preserving recreational land, and then the same for historical resources and then community housing. And so in terms of, you know, theoretically, how can we use this money? Those are our options. They're on the table, and the same with our specific bylaw that allows us to do that. And I support us having, you know, a vested interest in using the money in all of those ways. I think what matters more to me is that we have a plan and we have a vision. And I think one of the things that I certainly bring to the table with so many years of sort of strategy in my background is this idea that, you know, we need a vision, and then we need a strategy, and we need a roadmap, and we need goals, and we need to make sure that we're working towards something so that we're not making sort of myopic decisions in the moment, because that doesn't get us anywhere, right? It sort of gets us everywhere but nowhere at the same time. I think we really have done a great job using those funds for recreation space and open space with the acquisition of the Sagmore Hill and the Dunhaman Fields. Like, we have made a huge investment. I think it's like $2.7 million that are bonded for that. And so I would like us to look and make sure that there's balance in how we're spending those funds. I know we have a community housing need, and so I'd certainly like for the funds to be there. I know there's huge historic renovation projects that we have on the books in our town, like Town Hall. And so I certainly don't want to exclude the possibility of using the funds in those ways, and I think we should continue to look at ways to use them there. I do want to make sure there's balance and that we're ensuring that those funds are being used in the myriad ways that they were intended and servicing us in all four of those pillars.
Thanks, Caroline. Next on this question is Darcy. And Darcy, the question is, "What are your thoughts on using CPA funds for preserving land and/or caring for our natural environment?"
Thank you. For those who are at home and may not understand the terminology, the CPA stands for the Community Preservation Act. This was a law adopted, signed by Governor Silucci in September of 2000. Any city or town in the Commonwealth that adopts this initiative charges a percent of tax surcharge on your real estate, and it can go from 1% to 2% to 3%. Hamilton right now is at 2%. And you can actually see that little surcharge on your quarterly tax bills. It's itemized separately, so you can calculate what it is for you and your particular home. And the state doesn't actually match the money, although they used to, but now it's less of a 100% match, and it varies from year to year, but it's still an excellent way of raising revenue and keeping away from your proposition two-and-a-half tax levy. So CPA funds allow us to undertake projects that fit into four buckets, and that would be the historic restoration or rehabilitation. That would be open space, recreation, and community housing. And the law says that you have to spend 10% for each category every year. In addition to that, you do, there is a built-in mechanism to balance everything out. So you can't be seen spending, you know, on open space when you have historic restoration or renovation that goes begging. So there is that mechanism. For those, let's see, bear with me for just a second. The vote allowed the town to assess a 2% surcharge, and since 2005, we've distributed over $12 million to more than 85 projects. That just gives you an idea of the, and I will stop right there. Thank you.
Thanks, Darcy. Much appreciated.
I went over time.
That's okay. That happens. You get the nice, gentle nudge. I like that the timer renders me useless in that, in this event. So, and then last on question two, we'll go to Tom. Your thoughts on CPA funds for, I'm sorry, we're going to Rosie next. My apologies. CPA funds for preserving land and caring for our natural environment?
Right. So I strongly support using a portion of CPC funds to preserve land and protect our natural resources. In fact, under the bucket of open space and open space and recreation, under that heading allows for the purchase and protection of land next to aquifers and wetlands. And so I strongly believe that we should do that because it contributes to a clean water supply by limiting the area where potential runoff and contamination would occur. Secondly, we're allowed to purchase and protect open vistas. And aside from the increased property values, it aids in increasing the recharge that goes into the ground to increase our water supply. And certainly, open vista also aids in our mental well-being. We can also purchase and protect forested land. I advocate for that greatly because there is within that rubric habitat protection. The tree canopy cleans the air, and my son Mike is always saying trees are the lungs of the world. The roots of the trees filter our water for free, so we don't have to have an expensive filtration system. And the canopies of trees lower the surface temperatures, and all of these are climate change mitigation measures which are invaluable. We are also under that heading, allowed to buy and preserve land for agricultural use. Of course, who doesn't want local sourcing of fruits and vegetables? They're fresh, no preservatives. And more importantly, there are no fossil fuels required to transport food to our local farm stands. And so I think using 10% plus any of the unassigned funds toward unassigned funds toward this would be the best thing we could do with our CPC funding. Thank you.
Thanks, Rosie. Uh, and now Tom, uh, question goes over to you.
Great. Thanks, Paul. Um, yeah. So I think, you know, short answer, I think yes, I, I would support it. Um, you know, it's one of the, um, you know, areas that fall within the four buckets that everyone's pretty much described here, uh, for allowance under the law. Um, I think we just want to, you know, make sure that we're adhering to that, you know, that 10% mechanism and making sure that we're balancing and allocating certain resources. Um, and also just making sure that we're following the proper procedures as well. So I know there's a community preservation committee that is charged with, you know, studying the town's needs and making recommendations on these. The select board does have, you know, the ability to comment and provide some sort of guidance around this. But ultimately it's up to the, the committee to make those decisions. So I think it's important that we adhere to those, um, those mechanisms. Now, I do think there's a lot of value in preserving our natural resources, you know, for myself. I know I enjoy hiking. I enjoy being out in the, the, you know, the open space in Hamilton. I love the beauty of our natural landscape. I know that's important to a lot of towns. Uh, but I also know that there's a lot of projects and areas that we want to, you know, invest project. It's going to have a return on investments that we're actually going to get, you know, some sort of, um, you know, revenue or some sort of, you know, generate some sort of revenue from the town. So if we're looking at, you know, rehabilitating historic resources or recreational land, um, or looking at community housing, which is another bucket that it falls into, uh, under the CPA act. I think we want to make sure that we're looking at those as well so that, you know, these have potential to generate revenue as well for the town. So I think as long as we're, you know, properly allocating, you know, resources to each of these four buckets and we're, you know, following the proper protocols of going through the committees and, you know, engaging with the town and getting their feedback and understanding what is important to this community. I think that, that makes sense and we should continue to do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Uh, much appreciated. So we'll go right into our third question. And, um, this is a, a, um, a short and sweet question. And Darcy, we'll start with you and then go to Rosie and Tom and Caroline. So, uh, Darcy, the question to you is, uh, what is your position on updating Town Hall?
Well, I, I am for it 100%. I, um, I have spent a lot of time and energy learning about our Town Hall. We don't, um, comply with ADA, uh, which is the Americans for Disability Act. So anybody with, uh, crutches or a wheelchair or a stroller or a cane, a walker, anything like that, they don't have access to their own government. And that to me is just, um, unforgivable, really. I, I, um, I know that there are ways that we can access grant funding for ADA access. And in fact, um, the state is working with us. Um, that we're, right now we're going through a, a process where they're going over what we need and how to get there. Um, we also don't have any, um, we don't meet any building codes, not even the sanitary code. Can you imagine that? Hamilton Town Hall doesn't need sanitary code, electric code, fire code, um, any safety codes. Uh, it's just plumbing code. So we, there is a lot of work to do, but fortunately there's some good news. Uh, we have a plan that is shovel ready. It's, um, we have already gotten the town meeting to vote for moving ahead with it. So the town meeting is actually our legislature. So they did approve that. The failure that we had was at the, um, funding mechanism at the ballot box. So we're hoping we can, um, take another look at it. The state has also given us a variance. And I don't know if anyone here is familiar with variances, but there are special dispensations that are very hard to get. And the state is allowing us to, um, to build this addition for ADA compliance using their variants and there's a time limit on it. So I will leave it there. So it's a work in progress and I hope we can, uh, complete the mission. Thank you.
Thanks, Darcy. Um, uh, next on position, uh, uh, your position updating Town Hall is Rosie.
Hi. Yes, that, that's a great question. I've spent, um, the past year, um, as a member of the Town Hall Building Committee, working very closely with the design team and the architects and really understanding then the nuts and bolts, the finances and, and so forth. And truly being, um, understanding of the need for, for ADA, um, compliance. Um, and so that this update would certainly do that. It would also use as much green infrastructure as the budget would allow. And it would also provide for, um, an enlarged meeting space. So I'm a big, um, history buff on the Town Hall. The Town Hall represents our, our entire history. It was erected and put into service, or, um, just about 1896, 1897. And in its day, it's been, um, a school, it's been a, a library. It has been, um, it has served as a building facility for, um, soldiers going off to war. Um, it, it has a phenomenal history. Um, there are memorials to World War, World War II veterans and Korean War and, um, Vietnam veterans. And so I, I definitely believe that that's an important part of our history. It speaks to who we are. The architecture is beautiful. Um, and in terms of what I can do, my little bit here, as I've applied for a Mass Cultural Council grant for $250,000 to make the second floor meeting room a welcoming community asset. Um, originally the Town Hall was indeed a, a community gathering space. And my vision and the vision of many others is that it become that community space again to draw, to draw people together and to, um, enhance the, the quality of life for people and to show pride in our community.
Uh, Tom, um, position on updating Town Hall?
Yes, thanks, Paul. Um, so yeah, I actually, I agree with Rosie and Darcy with, uh, on their comments about the ADA compliance. Um, I think that's incredibly important. Having worked with individuals with disabilities in the past, I know that it was an accessibility issue to make sure that these individuals have access to their, their town government. Um, I know from a funding standpoint that there was issues in the town, um, you know, whether, um, getting voted down at town, at town meeting about the funding piece bit. And, um, you know, where the fund is coming from. And I understand a lot of that is coming from the Community Preservation Committee and the, and the act. And those funds are allocated towards it. So it's not, you know, completely falling on the tax, um, the tax payer. And I think that's the important thing is education through the public around this. I talked to a lot of individuals about Town Hall and the project. Most people that I talked to have no idea what the, the background is, what the details are, where the funding is coming from, why they're updating it, what the updates are. And so a lot of people just had a position of, no, I don't support it because it's funny. And I don't understand what the project is and I'm paying out of my taxes for it. So I think there's a big, um, push for education in, in talking with the public and understanding different projects, understand what's going on in the town, allowing for forums where they can have questions where we can talk about facts and what's going on with a particular project. Um, because a lot of people don't want to sit on the select board meeting for hours on a, on a Monday night. But, you know, I've been joining them and I've been joining them very much, but I'm sure not everyone in the town does love that. So I think we need, you know, different ways to connect with people and not everyone wants to be on Zoom. Some people want to be in person. Some people like email. Some people want a phone call. Um, you know, in my prior work, I've engaged with people in a lot of different ways. And I feel like we have to engage with the people, explain what the issues are so that they can understand them and make informed decisions. And I think that's the. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, and Caroline, um, position on, position on updating Town Hall?
Thank you. Uh, I think Tom sort of perfectly summed up where I was going to go with this, which is that, um, this is really exemplary of the platform that I'm talking about, which is process. Like the last vote was so plagued by misinformation, false information, a false narrative about the funding and where it was coming from. And I had very similar conversations, uh, that, that Tom has had with folks around town, which is that they didn't know where to get their information. They didn't know how to engage with the process, which led to them taking secondhand information um, or, or false information and sort of making a vote based on that. I've joked that the good news about Town Hall is that it's like a zombie in the apocalypse. Like it won't die. It'll keep coming up. So we keep getting another chance to get it right um, and get that narrative out there and help people understand what it is. Um, I love everything that Rosie said about, um, the history of Town Hall and what it means to the town. Um, but I'm also really interested in how it becomes an activated part of our future. And I think solving that really bridges that gap between those who love what it is and what it, what it has represented, but also want to make sure that we invest in something that pays it forward into the future. And I think, um, you know, making sure the space is activated, making sure it's a place that obviously is safe for, um, our employees and our residents to go and pay their water bill and pick up their compost bin, which I've had to do twice. Um, but also a space that people feel like they can use and that is their own and that is, um, you know, modernized in ways that means that we can engage with that space naturally as a part of the landscape of our town. Um, because I don't want to throw good money after bad. I don't, I don't want to make an investment now, um, that wasn't enough or, or didn't get us where we wanted to be and then have to revisit that investment in five, eight or 10 years. Um, so how do we really make sure that we have the big picture in mind, um, and we make smart decisions? But I love our Town Hall. I want our Town Hall to be there. Um, I want it to represent the strong future that we have as well as the storied history that we have. And I think we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you all for those answers. I think, um, hopefully the, the community will learn a lot about Town Hall just from listening to this, the last eight minutes here where you four were explaining it. Um, and it is, it's really hard to find new, especially in the last two years, to find ways to really connect around these issues. Um, and I know a lot of people have got reduced down to, it's just this amount of money versus not. So I really appreciate your expansion on that. Um, last question before we head to closing statements. Uh, and we are, we're doing really well on time. So, um, the, uh, this question, uh, Rosie, you'll, you'll start off and then Tom, Caroline and Darcy will finish. So, uh, the question's a little bit, a, a little bit longer. So, uh, Rosie, I'll read it and then happy to repeat it. Uh, the select board also serves as the water board for Hamilton. What do you think the select board should do to protect the quality of the water supply or find new water supplies for the town?
Hmm. That's a great question. It's, uh, definitely on the, on the forefront of people's minds. It's always, it's always an issue. Um, so protecting our water supply is, involves protecting the quantity as well as the quality. So, um, I'll just give a little history. We're a, a member of the Ipswich Water, Ipswich River Watershed. Um, we're one of 14 communities running from, excuse me, running from Burlington to Ipswich. Your 14 communities are about 350,000 people. Um, so I think there are, um, there are concrete things that we have embarked upon. And I'm just going to go over some of them that I think are especially important. We have already embarked upon planning for a pre-treatment plant to filter out, um, organic compounds so that it won't, uh, clog up our actual filtration plant. It's a hefty, it's a hefty amount, $2.4 million. It's already passed at town meeting and we are embarking upon that shortly. Second thing is to have a strong, and we do, Strong Conservation Commission that is educating residents, flagging wetlands violations and instituting an order of conditions to resolve the issue. Third thing is to work with the Ipswich River Watershed Association. They're educating communities about low-impact development. And four, the most effective way to protect our, our water from contamination was, is with a strong wetlands protection bylaw. It's proactive. Early in my first term, I wrote a very protective bylaw, um, a very protective, um, wetlands bylaw. There's a lot of resistance to it. Some developers won't like it. While I knew I was on the right track at that point. And so now our Conservation Commission is reviewing, editing and adding even more protections. And it will come out in the fall for voter registration. And finally, um, Hamilton's in the midst of participation in a sustainable water management initiative. It's a state grant for $170,000. We're working in collaboration with other towns, including Topsfield, Manchester, the Ipswich River Water Association, uh, excuse me, Ipswich River, um, Watershed Association and the Beverly Salem Water Department. The goals of this initiative are to ensure sustainable water management practices that protect the public health, protect the natural environment and provide for economic growth. Sorry, I went over.
That's okay. Thanks, Rosie. Um, um, we will, uh, now, um, ask, uh, Tom. Um, I'll read this again, Tom, just to note what the question is. Uh, the select board also serves as the water board for Hamilton. What do you think the select board should do to protect the quality of the water supply or find new water supplies?
Yeah, thank you, Paul. This is, this is a really good question. I think, you know, that something the town is, you know, probably concerned about and things that we've heard, you know, either in this town or the state about, you know, making sure that we have, you know, quality water supply. Um, you know, I've spent a lot of time just reviewing documents, um, you know, on our town website and reviewing our water studies and water reports. And, you know, from what I've learned is that we've had issues in the past with some of our water quality. But, you know, that has since been resolved and, you know, our water is, you know, now safe. It is, you know, not, I mean, but there is something that we need to look at for future as far as, as, uh, Rosie alluded to, as far as, you know, quantity of water and where we're getting our water. So I did learn recently that, you know, um, you know, we actually don't have access to the Witten Lake, which is, you know, where, you know, you think you would have a lot of access to water and we might be able to utilize that, but we don't have that. And we get our water from the Ipswich Watershed, which is not a, um, you know, it's a bit of a volatile, you know, area and not a great place to get our water and not going to be a sustainable place to get our water. And then we need to look for other, uh, areas in the future. So I think, you know, I would certainly support as a member of the select board that we, you know, continue to look at this, that we, you know, look at some sort of exploratory committee or some sort of, um, you know, additional studies to look at other areas where we can potentially get water in the future. And whether we look at the Greater Coastal Basin or other areas, um, you know, make sure that we're getting all of the information, you know, what the process will look like, what the funding will look like to, you know, change our water source. Make sure that we're engaging with the appropriate committees, like the Conservation Commission and others. You know, making sure that we're engaging with the community and understanding what the impact on the town's going to be, what the, uh, what the financial impact is going to be. So I think as long as we're, uh, you know, continuing to look at it and being proactive to make sure that we're not just waiting for, um, you know, something bad to happen. I think we need to, you know, use the master planning process that's underway right now and, and be proactive and look at, um, taking the next steps, exploring alternative solutions for our water.
Thank you, Tom. Um, Caroline, uh, the, the, the question is to you. What do you think the select board should do to protect the quality of water supply or find new water supplies?
Thank you. Um, I think first things first, I, we need to give credit where credit is due. Like there are ongoing conversations and so much awareness, um, about this. I agree with Rosie, like there are proactive measures that are being taken. Um, we've had some missteps, like nobody wants to be on the EPA, um, probation list. But, you know, we got on there and, and that was, that was too bad. But, you know, when you turn on your faucet now, like you, you have good clean water. And so we've made strides and we've coordinated to a place where that's there. Um, I think we need to reduce our dependence on the Ipswich River Watershed. Um, and I think, you know, we probably have, based on the current population data, looking forward, like do we have 15 or 20 years that we could get by on this? Yeah, but that's, that's not a great strategy, right? So how do we set a plan that says that we want to reduce or eliminate our dependence on the Ipswich, uh, River Watershed by, you know, 2034? Um, and then what is the strategy to get there? I agree with Tom. I think we need to look at the, um, Greater Coastal Basin. We need to be looking, uh, with better coordination with other municipalities, whether that's Beverly, unfortunately to, you know, lease back some of the water that we gave to them or sold to them. Um, but we need to have a strategy. And then I think we need to have a plan for how we get there. And we need to be measuring those milestones over the next sort of, you know, two to four to six to eight years, um, so that we don't get to the end of our rope, um, and then realize that we have to panic and make a short-term decision uh, for what was very obviously a long-term problem. Um, but, you know, I, I certainly think that these are conversations that are, that are ongoing and active. I think there's a desire to be proactive. Um, I think we just need to keep our foot on the pedal and make sure that, that we make the right decision well in advance of the time when it becomes critical and our choices become limited. Um, because, you know, we, we don't have a community without fresh water. Um, so it's certainly important. Thank you.
Thanks, Caroline. Uh, and Darcy, um, last answer has to do with, um, protecting the quality of water supply or finding new water supplies.
Right. Um, most people may not realize, but the Ipswich River Basin, the Ipswich River is one of the top 10 endangered rivers in the whole country. And the state of Massachusetts has been asking Hamilton to look elsewhere. The closest, um, source of water that we would be looking at is, is in what's called the North Coastal Basin. This is in the Chibaco region. Uh, it includes the, the, uh, Chibaco Lake, which straddles, um, the area between Hamilton, Essex and Manchester by the Sea. Manchester by the Sea is already getting some of their drinking water from the North Coastal Basin. Uh, in Essex, um, if you're looking for, uh, costs of sewer to do a conversion to sewer, say through the MWRA or through another, uh, entity of that kind. Back in, I think it was about 15 or 20 years ago, Essex took that route. Most of the houses there are on sewer. And the betterment, the sewer betterment costs back then were $35,000 per household. And that went right onto your mortgage. If you didn't have a mortgage, you would pay that when you sold the property. So you really have to weigh everything. In addition to that. So you really have to weigh everything. In addition to that, once you become in a sewer system type of facility, your water bills are going to be in the $600 to $700 at a minimum per quarter. So all of that has to really be factored in. It seems to me the North Coastal Basin is the most reasonable way to ensure safe drinking water and also to keep it affordable. So that's where I think we should be looking. And that's where I think we, our SWMI grant is exploring that right now. Thank you.
Darcy, and thanks, everybody. We are done with the question portion of the evening. So you know, it's, again, it's, it's a challenge to answer really complex questions within two minutes and we really appreciate your attempt to do so. And I know the community will as well. So we are heading into closing statements now. And closing statements will be two minutes each. And obviously we'd love you to direct the candidates a way for them to contact you with any other questions they may have, although I, I believe and I'm sure you're all very active online and, and open to being transparent with the town. So we'll give you two minutes to give any closing thoughts on why you think the community should elect you into the, into the youth select person position. We'll start with Tom. So Tom, you get the first two minutes.
Hey, thanks, Paul. So yeah, I just wanted to say, first of all, you know, I love this town. I've, I've been here for 11 years. My wife and I have been here. We're raising three kids here. Our kids have been on my, kindergarten in September. My kids will be going to school here and they play in the playground. They go to Patton Park. You know, we, we love being here. We love hiking. We love being on the trails. We love every aspect of it. So I want to make sure that, you know, our town is, you know, continuing to be sustainable so that my kids can, you know, you know, go to great schools and they can, you know, end up buying a house here someday and it can be affordable for them. So I want to make sure that we do have those strong schools, that we're being proactive and strategic around some of our decision-making so that we can, you know, generate revenue. But I also want to, you know, provide housing to our seniors and our low-income families and, you know, make sure that we're taking care of them as well. You know, I have, you know, my in-laws live in town as well and they're, you know, older individuals. My mom goes close by. So I'm always thinking about our elderly and our senior members of our community. So I want to make sure that we're taking care of everyone while, you know, also looking at just preserving our, our community feel and preserving our, our town here and making sure that we're, you know, preserving our scenic areas and open space. You know, one thing around revenue, I want to make sure that, you know, that we're looking at revenue, we're also looking at maximizing our state grant opportunities, looking at state and federal grants. A lot of times these require a plan. So it's not like you can just file a grant and get free money, but you have to actually have a plan in place. I think that we have to look at our master plan process that's underway and making sure that we're being proactive in looking at some of our projects and opportunities to getting those state grants. And I just really think that we should be, you know, considering all options on the table at this point. So I think, you know, I'd like to ask for your vote on April 7th and I'd love for you to catch me and talk further and reach out. You can reach me at MyersForSelectBoard@gmail.com. That's my last name, the number four, SelectBoard@gmail.com. Feel free to reach out to my Facebook page, which I've been posting regularly on. Feel free to connect with me there. I would love to get together, have a cup of coffee, go for a walk and just talk the issues. So feel free to reach out. Thanks.
Thanks, Tom, very much. Much appreciate your participation tonight. Next closing statement, we'll go to Caroline.
All right, let's do it. You know, regardless of what happens next Thursday, April 7th, I'll think about. I'm so grateful for this opportunity and for, you know, everything that I've learned over the last six weeks as a part of this process, the people that I've met. You know, I like Tom and I think like Darcy and like Rosie, I, I love this town. I love knowing people at my grocery store. I love running into people at the cow. I love walking downtown. I love, you know, meeting people at the, you know, at the park. I love running into people at the trails. You know, we all moved here because we wanted to be in this town. And I think we all have a combined desire to have this town be a place that we all love and it supports all of us, both young parents who will one day be our seniors and our current seniors and everything in between. But it does take planning and it takes some hard decision-making. I think change is inevitable. But it doesn't mean that it has to be out of our control. I think you can curate change. I think you can make sure that it's thoughtful and desirable and that it maintains the character of where we are. But most importantly, that it makes us a viable place into the future. And I think that's, that's what I'm really focused on is how do we preserve who we are and set ourselves up to be here for a really long time so that we can always have this type of community. So, you know, I, I want us to remain beautiful and green and open and inclusive. I love the dichotomy of our town that we have our downtown and we're accessible to the city for people who need to get there for work, but you can also have an entirely different life here on the weekends in our activated trails and our space. I would love to continue this conversation one-on-one with anyone who wants to continue to have it with me. You can find me on Facebook at Caroline for Hamilton Select Board. You can also email me at votecaroline@gmail.com. Because the conversations have been the catalyst for this campaign and for doing this. It has truly, truly been the one-on-one conversations that I have had that have inspired me to do this and will inspire me to continue to stay involved. So thank you guys so much for the opportunity to participate and to all the candidates for all their thoughtful responses.
Thanks, Caroline. Really appreciate those words. Darcy, your closing statement is next.
Thank you. Another thing to know about me is that I've lived in Hamilton for 40 years. I've enjoyed the legacy of those past residents who have preserved and loved the town for centuries. I love the rural ambience, the leafy green neighborhoods and areas, our hardworking citizens who volunteer their time and expertise for the benefit of all of us. I want to see people come together in collaboration and cooperation. I want to see all of us working together, pulling in the same direction. We've been through quite a time of disruption over the last two years with COVID and the national unrest. The rise of social media has given way to behaviors that would never be acceptable in public face-to-face conversations. I hope people will do some soul searching. We really need to be united in purpose if we are going to make progress for the people who live here. So I hope to continue to work on behalf of all Hamilton residents. We need to come together in unity and affection for one another. Let's put aside national politics and focus on our common goals and our dreams. There's no room for partisan politics in our municipalities lest we create unnecessary division. Select Board members follow our bylaws and we must not venture outside of the four corners of our bylaws. And that is why partisan politics is never practiced at the local level here in Massachusetts. I pledge to put the people of Hamilton before all else. I give you my word. My word is my bond and I'm humbly asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Darcy. Much appreciated. And Rosie, your closing statement is next.
Okay, so I, thank you for the opportunity. I think one of the important things is to talk about what I've done briefly as a selectman and where I would like to go for a next term, should I be re-elected. One of the important things that I've really enjoyed, most of all, is connecting with people in town. I've held a weekly selectman hour and I enjoy it when people come to me for, for problems. Sometimes there's something that I can attend to individually. Other times it's something that I need to take back to my board, but I feel most gratified at being able to help people with issues such as having the cemetery resodded and trees replanted, trees planted and giving a sense of peace to people who go to the cemetery to, to visit their loved ones. Second thing I'm especially proud of is helping to advocate for the Sherem Road closure. It was used as a cut through between Highland and Asbury. And it really endangered the safety of a family neighborhood. And I was very happy when we did decide to close that and the patient, and the families now have a cul-de-sac and it's the preservation of an, of a, of a family neighborhood. I also have enjoyed organizing community events. I've put on the winter bonfire. I organized that on behalf of the town and did all of these activities with sponsorship money. Winter bonfire, an English garden party at the Patton Estate and a dance performance and pizza party at the senior center. I've also worked in our vaccine clinics over the past years, which has given me such an opportunity to meet people. I'm very much a one-on-one person. I like to be out in the community. For the future, I'd like to continue to work on the Master Plan Steering Committee to help develop our master plan as a roadmap for the future and evolution of our town over the next few decades. I'd like to continue working on the Town Hall Building Committee to find a way for residents to agree to renovate our Town Hall. And finally, I've spent the last three years working with seniors to help them get the things that they felt they needed. And the last thing I'd like to, and at this point, I believe our town has some wonderful town resources and I'd like to develop community programs that will appeal to empty nesters. Our kids have great amenities available to them and our seniors now have a wonderful vibrant senior center. So it's time to enhance the wellbeing of our empty nesters so that when the kids are out of the home, these empty nesters will feel that they want to stay here because there's so much to do. So resources I would tap into would be library, rec department, community house and the pool.
Sorry to, I'm going to have to cut you off there. We, we want to give equal time to everybody and that was a little bit, a little bit, a longer bit over.
So sorry.
No, that's okay. I, you know, as just we ensure equity across the candidate line.
Absolutely.
So thank you all again. We, I'm going to pass it back over to Christina now to, to close out our session, but I wanted to offer one last bit of thanks to the four of you for donating your time tonight. And we had no disruptions on Zoom, which is a positive thing. I have, I don't know what's happening outside of this office in my home, but I really appreciate the time you've all taken and I am a firm believer that being able to hear you, your express ideas and share with each other shows how much in common we have in terms of what our town needs and how, how this commitment serves to benefit everybody in both Hamilton and Wenham. So thank you again for your time and I wish you the best of luck in, in, in the coming week. And, and thanks again to the Hamilton Wenham League of Women Voters and Christina, over to you to close things out.
Great. Thank you, Paul. The League would like to extend thanks to all the candidates for running and for participating this evening and special thanks to our moderator, Paul and our timekeeper, Tess. We do recognize however, that our time here was limited and we encourage voters who have follow-up questions to contact the candidates directly. And I'd also like to ask that you please consider joining us and working with other local volunteers so that we can continue to provide this type of voter education. You can learn more about us at LWVHW.org to learn more. And don't forget to attend the annual town meeting on April 2nd, which will start at 9:00 AM in Hamilton and be held at the high school. And remember to vote on April 7th in the general election. Thank you for watching.